Number twenty-two, oh-seven. I probably should have checked to make sure the camera was off.
That's good to go.
Okay, good to go. All right. First up, we're going to do a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. And we're going to have Commissioner. Do this first.
I'm going to join in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the day. We thank you especially in this time when we've needed the moisture so badly. We've gotten just a very good moisture event here that's helped us in our fire hazards and it's helped us in our farming community. And we thank you very much for that gift. We ask that you come invite at this meeting today, help to guide those here making the decisions. And continue to bless Ford County and the citizens here. Amen.
I would like to wish to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we need to amend the agenda. We'll put this under County Ministers' Report number eight for the shooting range. And make a motion, yes?
Can you make that right before the upcoming meetings?
Yes. So number seven, move seven to eight. Yep. Make a motion to amend the agenda for the shooting range.
A second.
Motion second, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, so in front of us is a consent agenda. The approval of meeting minutes, and this is twenty-two, oh-five, and oh-six. A credit card statement for February and the approval of additions and abatements, which we have a twenty-twenty-one PP for six-hundred-and-five-thirty and a negative and a twenty-twenty-one for two-twenty-five-eighty-two and a negative. I'd make a motion that we approve the claims of the consent agenda as approved or as presented.
I would second.
With the motion second, I'll call a vote, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, next up is claims for payment. This is the amount of four-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. Mr. Cox, is there anything in there to add?
Nothing unusual, payroll clearing software, vehicles, equipment for communications areas.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the claim for payment as presented.
And I'll second that. And I'll call a vote, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, this is where we have the time in the meeting for open public comments. Please limit five minutes per vigil, fifteen minutes per topic. Final action may be deferred until the next county commission meeting. If an emergency situation doesn't exist, so the microphone is open if anyone wants to come forward and talk to us about anything.
I have a quick report, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. I was able to, I was able to stop and visit Commissioner Snook yesterday. He is doing well. He said I could pass it on to everybody at the meeting if I wanted to. He is in good spirits. I believe Debbie Cox has been able to visit with him too, so he is doing well. I don't know when he'll be back, I don't know if he'll be able to be back for the next meeting or not, but we'll let you guys know.
Thank you for the update. Talk to him again, give him your best.
Anybody else for open public comment? Nope, okay. We have no unfinished business, no legal counsel. I'll move on to the County Ministers' Report.
First item we have is for firing EMS to pro-care services instructor agreement.
Afternoon, Chief Boyd.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. This agreement is for a maintenance contract on all of our load systems and power cots. Covers batteries, covers surcharge, strip charge, things like that. In the event we should have something to do with it, we do have to do this. This is a budgeted expense and it's a agreement.
Okay.
Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the service contract agreement with tracker from pro-care services.
Okay, I'll second that. Any further discussion on it? Hearing done, I'll call a vote, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next three items are for noxious weed director David Nichols.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon, David.
Good afternoon.
First have of the annual noxious weed eradication progress report two thousand and twenty-one. This goes to the Department of Agriculture. Explains about everything, the money situation, what we spend, my ten surveys that I'm required to do. Pretty extensive report. Do you have any questions? Shows chemical that we sell, what chemicals, what noxious weed those chemicals are applied to.
David, I was reading down through this on Johnson grass, you got, on the management plan, you got the county wide, are we talking about that yet or is that? Are you talking about your twenty-twenty-two management plan yet?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, I'll wait until we get to that.
Sorry. David, on this one, when you said you, it tells you what you, what chemicals you put on what? What, what page was that? I know, I know it's page six, there, you know, it talks about like dicamba and two-four D. Like, looking at your report, so on the second page, like, literally you have the field bind weed, which is probably the most common used.
On page six?
Or two and six, I guess I was jumping back and forth between the two.
Field bind weed, that's our most populated noxious weed. It's always going to be here, we just try to maintain it.
Yep.
That's part of my survey report here, number page six.
It is on six.
And that's what I find when I go out there and survey ten sections, I kind of estimate what I find in the sections. As far as the chemicals.
Look, that's on ten again.
Okay. Page four shows what chemicals we sell. Page in here that's going to show. Okay, page two, it doesn't show the chemical, but it shows what, basically what chemicals we sold to private lands, some of it we sprayed. It's all figured into the other county lands. The acreage on that. There is one for this private lands for each one. There is a treatment summary, that's page six. That's for field bind weeds. Should be a treatment summary for each of the noxious weeds. We have more noxious weeds in counties, but we only do the treatment summary report on the weeds I find on the ten sections.
Okay.
So like burrag weed, I didn't, in the ten sections I surveyed, I didn't find any, so we do not have to do a report on that one this year.
Got you. Can those sections change, I assume, every year?
Yes.
It's always a thorough report, just a lot of times for us, it's trying to figure out how we read it.
And like I say, it's just an estimate on the surveys. We found a glitch in the star program on a right-of-way at one of the properties. One piece of Johnson grass in the ditch, about two by two, so I put in the number zero-zero point, or zero-point-zero-zero-one, well, star system would calculate that, it kicked it up to ten of an acre.
Oh, wow.
I was like, no. So that's all the way down to the star, the small numbers, so by next year, I will even put them in.
Yeah.
Either that or star needs to fix their glitch.
Okay. I'd make a motion that we approve the noxious, annual noxious weed eradication report for twenty-twenty-one.
I would second.
Motion second, any further questions? Hearing done, I'll call a vote, all those in favor? Aye? Okay, thank you.
Next. I have the two thousand and twenty-two management plan. The Department of Agriculture put out this template, it's different than what we've ever used before, we made our own, and that's one of the reasons we're a little bit late on this, but they don't, we're not worried about it, due date being late. They had a convention first of March and everybody had questions on how much information they wanted on this. It used to be an eight-nine-page thing, and we're trying, they sent this out, kind of just basic stuff on there. So what this does is, what was your question, Mr. Commissioner?
In the, on the Johnson grass here, you have that Arkansas riverbed is highly infested.
Yes.
Has been for years.
Yes.
Are we supposed to be taking care of that for the state? Are they stepping up to the plate and paying for anything on that?
It's, I put that under state policy because Paul reads wherever the channels add, so I just.
We've had opportunity to visit that whole thing on a completely different aspect, but this is a noxious weed, and we've got the same thing, whether you're talking about state ground down there, or whether you're talking about state ground on these playas, and noxious weeds that are in those areas too. I don't feel like the state is stepping up and being the good neighbor that they ought to be in, in taking care of the weed infestation on their properties.
I, they say that they're really not going to pay no money to do that. I don't see why they would. They, they can hire a helicopter to come in and spray that, but I'm sure it'd be millions of dollars, probably billions, if you do all of the dry riverbed from wherever it is, Garden City or the Kansas City.
Border to border.
I put that in there so the state realized, again, there is a problem.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that it's in there, I just.
Landowners next to the river are biting it into their properties and.
Exactly, we're, we're interested as well because it blows out of them.
I cannot send the state, if you don't notice, or a.
No, that's, that's not what I'm saying you need to do, David.
I try to encourage the landowners to make sure they spray their property and handgun a little on the state, just try to control it. Like the tamarack tree is taking over, and the state won't do anything about that. It's moved into Colorado, it's getting bad also. But I did put in here, we've been working hard the last couple of years on Johnson grass on county right-of-ways, and we've talked to a lot of farmers, how to control it in our ground, trying to get that a little harder, get our acreage down, that's something we can do. Also must this, and we still got a chance to, I think, eradicate it, the state says probably will never. I tell them what, if we get everybody on board, we possibly could. Basically, they quite well is just going to blow it into a car or something and come back in from different county. I did put that in here for a reason, they need to.
You work with state statutes regarding noxious weeds.
Yes.
These things are all, these, they're all set in, in law by our legislature, passed by our governors and our states, our state is not stepping up and being, and being the steward that they should be on lands that they're supposed to be taking care of, is my point.
And the state does, let's see, I guess the big management, this management over noxious weeds, we report to them. It also says in the state statute, and it was made, that it's going to help pay some noxious weed director salary, and that never happened either. Hold on, I hear it, Chairman.
Okay. I was going to, I was, I was trying to figure out images of what some of these were, like Johnson grass, I'm trying to think about what that was. Got it now. All right. I'd make a motion that we approve the annual management budget for the noxious weed control for twenty-twenty-two.
I would second.
With the motion second, I'll call a vote, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
The last thing I have is the Kansas Department of Transportation, Maintenance Department, County Noxious Weed Agreement. They haven't changed this agreement in years. I did make one, one change to the labor cost, it was a twenty dollars an hour, and I raised that to twenty-five, just to make sure that for one operator, it's forty dollars. That'd be like a handgunner on Johnson grass on state right-of-ways or whatever we're doing, if he's spraying bind weed in a truck, it's forty dollars. If they're handgunning, it takes a second driver, then it's twenty-five dollars. That's what that means. And it was a twenty, but it was about time to raise that, just to make sure we're covering ourselves. And this agreement has been, Mr. Curbs has looked it over and he, he agrees with it, says it's good to go.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the agreement between Ford County and the Kansas Department of Transportation.
All right, I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five is for the sheriff, and he will not be here today. He is asking the commission to appoint Master Deputy Jared Mendrup to take his place on the Community Corrections Board. So the sheriff's office will still have a representative, it just won't be the sheriff.
Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve. Let's see, do we need to do a resignation first?
I guess I didn't think about that.
Yeah, I would. I'd make a motion to approve the resignation of Sheriff Bill Carter from the Santa Fe Trails Community Corrections Board.
I would second that. And call a vote, all those in favor?
Aye. And then I would make a motion to approve Master Deputy Jared Wendrup as his replacement on the Santa Fe Trails Community Corrections Board.
All right, I'll second that. And I'll call a vote on that, all those in favor? Aye?
It's Mindrup.
Mindrup, what did I say?
Mindrup.
Jared Mindrup, sorry.
The next item is for the special work session date for the twenty-two-three budget meetings for the outside entities as well as the department heads. Last year was May nineteenth.
On the outside?
Huh?
The May nineteenth is the, it's department heads, which is what we have to decide.
So we just want a date for the department head meetings for the budget. The first meeting in May this year will be on the second, and the second meeting will be the sixteenth, and we also have a fifth Monday, which is the thirtieth. So we could use that fifth Monday as the special meeting. That was it?
That's a, that's a holiday here.
All right.
I think we should do it that day.
Just get her done?
We'll have some happy department heads that day.
That's right, yeah. Do like Wednesday, the eighteenth?
Is your elected one-day deal?
That's.
Is your road bridge?
That's my conference, it is that week.
Yeah, it's the seventeenth. Is it that whole week?
Seventeenth and eighteenth.
About the eleventh.
Yep. Wednesday, May eleventh.
June?
Jump ahead.
May.
Right, okay. I should have been showing the right month. And when do you want, is that, start at eight-thirty again and keep going on? Do you need action on that?
Yes. It will be a special meeting, special work session.
All right, so I'd make a motion that we approve May eleventh, twenty-twenty-one, and it'd be what, from eight-thirty to five?
Yeah.
Sorry, twenty-twenty-two. Don't think too much of it. I was thinking about we department, approve it. Twenty-twenty-two, from eight-thirty to five, for a special work session.
For the end.
For budget, to discuss the twenty-twenty-three budget session, with each Ford County Department Head.
I would second.
I think we got that right. All right, with motion second, I'll call a vote, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, the amended agenda item will be for William Ward.
Commissioner, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm William Ward, I'm with the Santa Fe Trail Sportsman's Club, and we're doing the, maintaining the range for the sheriff. In our memorandum of agreement, we agreed to put an electronic gate on the, on the range, and the commission was gracious enough to allow us to work that in as we could. The plans we had pretty much fell through the technology, we had, got outdated pretty quickly, and we were not able to raise money in, in time to take advantage of that. We are in the process now of making that dream come true. This will hopefully allow us not to lock each other out. And while that problem has not been as big as it started out being, it does still happen. In fact, we've had some people that were locked on the range because somebody locked the gate with them on the range in such a manner that they could not get out.
Wow.
And so there were some flying phone calls there in order to get that taken care of. But we're hoping that by doing this, we will alleviate that portion of it and also make it easier for everybody. A suggestion, Sheriff Carr suggested that we use the same type of system and the same company as, as he's using on a lot of the other security that he's doing for the county. And while that wasn't something we thought of, it certainly makes sense to us. But our, what we would like is permission from you to seek somebody to put that system in for us, and so that when we find them, we can operate within a thirty-to-forty-five day window, as opposed to most of the people that we've been talking to, one of, one of will allow that bid to stand for about forty-five days. Just computer chips, materials, fuel, stuff like that. What we're asking is permission to put out bids and put that gate up. Questions?
How large has the sportsman's club become?
We are running about eighty, eighty-five.
Okay.
Memberships as a, as an average. We have a lot of family memberships where both, both people have keys, both people have range orientations and have keys, and then, you know, that type of a thing, so we're running about two-hundred-and-fifty people or so.
Oh, wow.
So to clarify here, we're, we're authorizing to request a, request for proposal, or?
Yeah, I don't know, are you, are you going to put the specs together for the bids?
We're, we're going to take care of everything, we're just asking that you allow us to do it. I mean, we're working, we're trying to work, we're working through the company that Sheriff Carr suggested, since they're already on the same wavelength as far as fogs and stuff like that. And so, you know, we're going to ask them for a bid. We had a couple of other bids which have expired, but just due to try and get things together. But now, basically what we're suggesting is that we'll put the gate up, the fogs will be taken care of through sheriff's office, and he will give us a block of fogs and we will check those out for our members if we check out instead of keys.
Well, I don't know, we, you know, as we talk about this, I don't know if the commission needs to approve our bid.
No, we just need to allow access.
Allow that, allow the gate to be put up.
Yeah.
They, if they're going to handle the bid process and the agreements and the liability and all that, that's on the sportsman's club. We are just allowing them to put that on county property. So it would just be a simple.
I'd make a motion to authorize Ford County Sportsman's Club to put up a gate.
There you go.
I'll second that.
It'd be Santa Fe Trail Sportsman's Club.
Sorry.
It's all right. There is a Ford County Sportsman's Club.
All right, so, thank you for correcting me on that. I would amend my motion to reflect the Santa Fe Trail Sportsman's Club.
And I'll still second that. With the motion seconds, um, I'll call a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, man.
The last item we have on the agenda, the upcoming meetings, we have the CFAB meeting for Tuesday, March twenty-ninth at six-thirty PM. And Tuesday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. We have the Kansas County Commission Association, that would be the spring conference, April twenty-sixth and twenty-eighth, that would be in Salida. If either one of you want to go, let me know, I'm gonna need some more information to you.
I signed up already, so...
Okay. Kansas Association of City and County Managers, that's spring conference, April twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, that would be in Morris. And that is all I have for the, the upcoming meetings and admin report.
I'd make a motion to adjourn. I will second it. With the motion second, I'll call the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.